Welcome. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Monday, July 21, 2025. I am Select Board Chair Diane Mahan. To my right, your left is?
Eric Helmut.
Leonard Diggins.
Steve Decourcy.
James Feeney, Town Manager.
Michael Cunningham, Town Council.
Ashley Moore, Board Administrator.
Tonight's meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with provisions in state law for remote participation in public meetings. Before we begin, please note the following: This meeting is being conducted in the Select Board chambers and over Zoom. It is being recorded and simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. People wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. People participating either in person or by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others and that if you wish to participate, we ask you to provide your full name and place of residence in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials found on the town's website. Specifically, click Select Board Agenda and Minutes page. If technical difficulties sever the remote connection to one or more participants and efforts to reconnect within a reasonable period of time fail, the in-person meeting will continue at the discretion of the chair, provided that a quorum of the board is physically present. Zoom participants are encouraged to retain the phone number provided in your confirmation email for backup audio connection to the meeting. There will be the following opportunity for public comment at tonight's meeting, open forum. If you're attending by Zoom and want to participate, please raise your hand when I announce that open forum public comment is open. If you do not know how to raise your hand in Zoom, now would be an excellent time to Google for how to do so. If you're in the chambers, that's easy. Let's see how much of the town's business we can get done tonight. Before we go into executive session, I will take the consent agenda, minutes of the meetings, June 9, 2025, June 23, 2025, reappointments, Open Space Committee Brian Keldar, Library Board of Trustees Jonathan Gates, Historical Commission Eric Stange, Michael Gervais, and Conservation Commission David Kaplan, Bath School Bash by Zara Kayajan, apologize if I didn't say that correctly, Cyrus Allen Museum Volunteers Event, and Art in the Park Event at the Robbins-Widmore Park on July 26. Heather Lovell, Director and Curator, Cyrus Allen Art Museum. For approval, an automatic amusement license for the Capitol Theater, 204 Mass Ave. Request special one-day beer and wine license, August 3, 2025, at Widmore Robbins House for a private event, Paula Kindl. Request for contractor drain layer license, North Shore Pavement out of Wilmington, Mass, Nellie's Construction, Inc., out of PVD, Mass, and Joseph Body Company, Inc., out of Southeastern, Mass. Do I have a motion or comment? Mr. Helmut?
I move approval, and I'd like to note that the weight of responsibility is particularly heavy on our heads tonight as we approve an automatic amusement that goes by the name of Ducky Mega Pleasure.
Capitol Theater.
And also, I should say, I'm very serious and really appreciate the work that the member of the community, the Capitol Theater is, and I'm sure this will add to the fund there and also help sustain the business.
Mr. Diggins?
I'll second. And following up on the Capitol Theater theme, they have like one of these little grabby toys, like we ate, and we all know that kids get stuck in those at times. And I suspect that's what's going on with Mr. Hurd right now, is that he's trying to get one of his kids out of the machine, you know? But also, you know, there he is, the kid's out, you know? And respect to the Cyrus Allen event, the Art in the Park sounds like it's a lot of fun, too. So glad to see they're doing something like that. So again, I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? If not, on a motion by Mr. Helmut to move approval of the consent agenda, items three through nine, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, unanimous vote. Good to see you, Mr. Hurd. Thank you for letting us start and be efficient. Next, we're going to go back to the agenda. We have an executive session to discuss and consider the acquisition of land parcels and/or rights in land parcels to obtain and secure a public right of way, including, as needed, permanent or temporary easements in and around the Stratton Elementary School area for the purpose of placing sidewalks in connection with the Commonwealth Safe Roots to School program. Is it expected? It is expected that the value of real property will be part of that discussion. To conduct those discussions in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town and this public body. Therefore, executive session is proposed in accordance with the exception to the open meeting laws set forth in General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6. Mr. Decourcy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the board go into executive session to discuss the matter that you just referred to, and again, for the reasons stated, because it's expected that the value of real property will be part of the discussion. The conduct of those discussions in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
By Mr. Helmut, executive session is a roll call vote. Attorney Cunningham?
Mr. Decourcy?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Five zero vote.
And that means we have to respectfully ask everyone to step out. We're going to be as efficient as possible. Fifteen minutes would be ideal, but I can't see it going beyond thirty. So I apologize.
Madam Chair, just, I think you already said it, but just to make sure, if you want to restate that the board will return to open session following the conclusion of the executive session?
And we will come back out of executive session into public session. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We're back, and we appreciate everyone's patience with us, and we wouldn't have done that if it wasn't absolutely necessary. So taking a few things out of order on the agenda, what I'd like to do next is to go to appointments. The first one is the Affordable Housing Overlay Committee, Zavid Preitzer. And please tell me how I should have said your name. If I said it incorrectly, I apologize.
Zavid.
Zavid Preitzer. I recognize you from town meeting, but just name and address for the record.
So Zavid Preitzer, 44 Grove Street in Arlington.
And if you could just give us a little bit about you and your interest in the committee and anything you'd like to say.
Yeah, so I'm Zavid Preitzer. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 17. I've served in town meeting for a few years now, and one of the things I've done while there is I proposed a warrant article to increase the allowed floor area ratio for mixed-use buildings, which has helped, which succeeded. It got passed, and it has helped allow some mixed-use buildings to be buildable along Mass Ave, which produces additional housing. So part of why I got involved in Arlington politics in general is because I think zoning is one of the best ways we can, at the local level, live our values. And I think part of that needs to be providing housing for people that might otherwise be unable to afford to live in Arlington. So I think, you know, the affordable housing overlay idea is a very strong concept to increase the economic diversity and other types of diversity in our town, and I'd like to be a part of making it successful.
Thank you. Any my colleagues? Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll move approval, and Mr. Hurd and I, as a subcommittee, had a pleasant interview with with Max Preitzer. And, you know, we're impressed with your understanding that this is an exciting potential tool, and it's also the responsibility of this committee to propose, make proposals that that can win in town meeting, that town meeting would accept. So, you know, I think that you seem, you clearly understood that part of the process as well, and I look forward to your service. Thank you for being willing.
Thank you.
Mr. Hurd?
And I'll second that. And again, thank you for the interview. And the one thing that I always ask is just to make sure that individuals have the time commitment, and you certainly exhibited that in the interview. So we're happy to have you representing the Select Board in that position on the board, on the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions. First, what's with the Lauren Gibson under the qualifications?
Did I forget to update something in the resume?
Yeah, it's just like two Lauren Gibson lines, you know, the town meeting member.
I was just using, I was just using some template, and I clearly did not proofread it carefully enough.
Okay, so then what would you have said?
Say again?
What would you have said under town meeting member?
I mean, I don't know. I mean,
Okay, all right.
I mean, I think, you know,
Fine, fine, fine.
I think town meeting is a great opportunity to help, you know, push Arlington in a positive direction. And I think it's been very educational and eye-opening to be part of town meeting and to also talk to people in my precinct about the issues that are important to them.
Gotcha, gotcha. So now the serious question is, so do you think workforce housing and affordable housing overlay are compatible?
Could you say the first part again?
Workforce housing. Do you think, like, creating?
I think, I think to address the current, like, housing issues, I think it takes a multipronged approach. I think this affordable housing overlay is one important piece of the puzzle, but it's not sufficient. I think in addition, you know, so for those who aren't aware, like, the affordable housing overlay concept is, you know, subsidized affordable housing for people with, you know, pretty low incomes, which I think is really important. But many people might not be, might not qualify for that type of housing but have trouble affording market rate housing. So I think there's more we can do as a town in terms of zoning and potentially other policies to help also provide housing for people that might have too high income to qualify for subsidized affordable housing necessarily, but not so high income that they can easily afford the, you know, million-dollar houses that we often see being sold in Arlington. So I think, and I don't think there's fears in any way with workforce housing, but I do think for some definitions of workforce housing, definitely, there's more that we need to do so that people like, you know, teachers and firefighters who might not qualify for, you know, the income requirements or might just, you know, the waitlist might be too long for some of the affordable housing so that they can live in town as well.
Thank you. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And with that, I do want to say thank you, and thank you to our colleagues for conducting these interviews. We had some really, really good, great candidates. So in that sense, we couldn't go wrong. And I'm very helpful and grateful that you were chosen and you're able to commit to yet another thing on top of everything else. You're volunteering and donating to the town of Arlington. So with that, on a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, unanimous vote. Good to see you again. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
Next, we go to Agenda Item 11, Arlington Bicycle Advisory Committee Anton Rapitoff, term to expire June 30, 2028. Please come up along with Matthew DeRaimer, term to expire June 30, 2028. And when you say your name correctly, and I didn't, I apologize. If you could just, again, state your name and address for the record, and a little brief on yourself.
Hi, I'm Anton Rapitoff. I live at 438 Massachusetts Avenue, apartment 200 in Arlington. So I've been a member-at-large for, I think, one and a half year already on Arlington Bicycle Advisory, yeah, in a bag. I've helped some, like, this year I helped, like, last year I helped arrange the town meeting for, and I also participate in many other activities. I passed Civic Academy recently, which I really appreciate town does for us to learn how it functions. It was extremely useful. I commute by bike myself usually. Like, it's multimodal. I commute to rail and then take a train, but I bike to rail. Yeah, so I'm extremely grateful to have this opportunity. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. We'll hear from, then we'll go to the questions.
Matthew DeRaimer, 47 Decatur Street. I'm a longtime Arlington resident, and, yeah, for more than a decade, I've been advocating for safer cycling infrastructure in this region, including advocating for the Mass Ave at Appleton Quick Build, which probably some of you got letters from me for, and also Hills Hill Pump Track. I've been a member-at-large since last year and helped out with various projects, including the upcoming Bike Way Block Party, which is the Sunday before Town Day. Hope to see everyone there. I believe bicycle infrastructure is essential for Arlington's safety, sustainability, and livability. I'm committed to collaborative problem solving and look forward to contributing to our town's continued progress in becoming more bicycle-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion from my colleagues? Mr. Diggins?
I think they're looking at me because I'm on TAC, you know, but I'm very happy, you know, to make the motion to accept your membership, you know, on AVAC meeting. And you kind of asked my question that I was going to ask both of you, and that is, what do you think we could do to improve bike safety in town? So you answered that question, but you, Mr., I'm sorry, I don't have your last name up here.
Rapitoff?
Rapitoff.
So I think actually, there are, I would like to have, most streets, at least many big streets have bicycle infrastructure, safe, that people feel safe to use and are actually safe. And maybe we can start small and do some quick builds and see whether they work. That might not require us to do a lot of planning and spend a lot of money, but still get like seventy percent of results. We have an example of such quick builds in Heights, in Appleton Street with MASP, which where there was a tragedy like two years ago, I don't remember. And this quick build, I don't know how much it cost, to be honest, I don't remember, but I think it gave, it made this place safer. So I thank you for whoever did it.
And I'm going to beg my colleagues' indulgence on this one. I know we did a long time in executive session, but I can't pass this opportunity, Mr. DeRaimer, because I saw that you were working for Terrafugia, you know, and I have been, I've been a big fan of EVTalls, me, for a long time, and as people know, I mean, I have this vision of Arlington Center, it's having a big town development there, multimodal, it'd be great if EVTalls was one of those modes. People bike there and take the EVTall to wherever. My question to you is, what would, what height would we need to make EVTalls feasible, me, in the center? If we were to, what height would we need?
Like the takeoff height or?
Yeah, for the structure. So let's say we're going to do a big structure, me, in the center, you know, and we want to have EVTalls as part of that. So what height should we aim for?
They're, they're pretty flexible. For example, in New York City, like, a lot of the helipads are on the river there. So, you know, we could, in this, you know, wonderful future where we have flying cars, and that's one of our multimodal things, you know, we could have helipads on Mystic River or some such, or it could be on building rooftops. But I think the big thing is, it would probably be nice if it was the biggest thing around. But, but yeah, no specific requirement.
Okay, all right, that's it. Thank you.
So my flying tour bus, bringing in all the visitors to see all our history that we have in Arlington?
Someday, someday.
Someday could be there.
Yeah, unfortunately, Terrafugia didn't make it, but there's other companies, you know, in that space. It's kind of a multi-billion dollar kind of cash infusion you need, but someone will get there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Decourcy. Any further discussion in common? If not, on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Decourcy, to approve both of these gentlemen to the Arlington Bicycle Advisory Committee. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you. Next, we have Agenda Item 12, Board of Health, Sabrina Egan, term to expire January 31, 2028, and I believe she will be joining us by Zoom. Can you hear us? And let's see if we can hear you.
Yes, I can hear you. Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. If you could just give your name and address and sort of a little preamble on yourself.
Yes. So I'm Sabrina Egan. I live at 66 Chandler Street in Arlington, moved to Arlington about a year and a half ago, and I have been a public, working as a public health nurse for a little over twenty years, largely in international health, but also in, in health here in Massachusetts and earlier in my career in Ohio.
Thank you. From my colleagues, Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to move approval. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. I know that you are aware of just how important a role this is, and I think your very impressive career will serve you well in making decisions for the town's health. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I look forward to it. Thanks very much.
Mr. Hurd?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hurd. Also, my thanks, and it's amazing, over my years working in Arlington, whether on this board or another capacity, what a great resource the Board of Health has been, and can already think of another area that could be helpful in the future. So I do appreciate you volunteering your time to the town because it's invaluable, and it's definitely appreciated. So we look forward to working with you in the future. On a motion?
Thank you.
Thank you. By Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further comments and discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, unanimous vote. So nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too. Thanks so much.
And next, we have two appointments to the Disability Commission, Alex Dorson, term to expire June 30, 2028, and Emma Marlin Kurial, term to expire June 30, 2028. And I believe they may be on Zoom.
Mr. Dorson or Ms. Dorson is available on Zoom, and I don't see on Zoom. Emma is, oh, and we have Emma in the audience.
Okay, so Emma, if you want to come up to the table. And I'm going to start with Alex Dorson. If you could just say your name and address for the record, as well as a little brief explanation for your interest in this committee.
Yes. Hi, everyone. My name is Alex Dorson. My address is 31 Sawans Street. I actually know Emma. She lives right down the street from me. I took an interest in the Disability Commission because as someone with multiple disabilities, who has lived in Arlington my entire life, I am committed to seeing that our town gets better. I, I am able to acknowledge that having been to other places in my life, there, you know, Arlington does well, but there's always room for improvement.
Thank you. Again, your name and address for the record, and a little brief explanation.
My name is Emma Marlin Kurial. I, I live at 11 Cross Street, so it's a dead end near Waldorf Park. And yes, as Alex mentioned, I'm her neighbor. And I have many, many skills, and I would like to join this commission because I am a passionate accessibility advocate who lives with an invisible disability herself and would like to become civically engaged in her community. I believe I have a unique perspective to, to place on the projects of this commission.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn to my colleagues next, but I'm really excited by both you, Alex and Emma, if I can call you by your first names, volunteering to be on the Disability Commission, if not for to teach an old lady like me some other ways that the Disability Commission, the members on it, can sort of branch out and not just be doing business the way we have for all these many years, whether it's working with the diversity, equity, inclusion. First, did you want to say, Emma?
I am, by the way, I now am DEI intern at the Town of Arlington Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Department. So I'd like to just put that forward. And I'm, I'm in school. I'm a college senior. So hopefully, to graduate this year, I'm majoring in Health and Human Services. So ever since I was little, ever since I can remember, all I'd like to do is be social and help people. So.
No, and that'll be great, because that's why I was, you kind of, I didn't know you were going to say that, but I think we really need on this commission. And I think Alex, where you've also grown up here in Arlington and have faced different issues, I don't know if you want to give us another couple of sentences in terms of what things we should be looking at. Sorry.
Yeah, so I, I'm also actually about to go to college. I'm heading off to Salem State in the fall. I will continue to virtually support Arlington and be around as like a commission member and be on the commission actively. I, I'm hoping that that's not too much of a conflict, but I can also wholeheartedly say I also have an invisible disability. I have multiple invisible disabilities. And yeah, I, I am also someone who would love to be involved in action work, very much in the sense of like, as well as talking about how to make the town better, I would love to also just help make the town better and be like, you know, if we're installing a ramp somewhere, I can, I could potentially help install it, or stuff like that. I'd love to play kind of a, do something both on a committee level and on a personal level of doing action that makes the town more accessible.
Thank you so much. I'll turn to my colleagues. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I am delighted to make the motion to accept both of you on the ADA, I mean, the Disability Commission, you know, and, and, I mean, what's really great about both of you is that you're young, you know, and so it's great to see youth getting involved, being so intensely in the town, you know, and I am happy that the technology allows you to participate even though you're going away to school. I mean, it's good for, I mean, that kind of remote participation. But as we all know, any of us can become disabled or have mobility challenges at any given point in time due to accidents or illnesses. So it's really good that the, the commission is making, you know, that available, that ability to participate available to you. And also, I mean, I love the fact that you live in my neighborhood, you know, and, and I think, I kind of remember getting a whole bunch of plantains from you and your mom one year. So I think that was kind of.
Oh, you came to the plant swap?
So, so, so I think, I think that was kind of the way of saying, hey, you know, we'll, we'll want, you know, get a little payback for that, so.
So the way to Mr. Diggins' heart is through his plant swap? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, plantains. They're plantains.
Plantains, okay, plantains. All right, I'm sorry.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Decourcy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Now happily second Mr. Diggins' motion. Thank you both for your willingness to serve, and Emma, best of luck to you in your last year of school, and Alex, best of luck at Salem State.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? If not, on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Decourcy, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you, and thank you for waiting.
Thank you very much.
Glad to see you. We'll see you as an intern or a commissioner. Thank you, Alex.
I'm going to log off, but I will, you know, hopefully see you guys in the future. Have a great day.
Thank you. And now Historic District Commission, Avon Place District, Andrew Jones, term to expire June 30, 2028. Good evening. Thank you for waiting. Name and address for the record, and preamble on yourself.
I'm Andrew Jones, go by the name Andy. Live at 221 Pleasant Street in Arlington. And yeah, so my partner and I have lived in Arlington now for five years. We moved to Arlington to get a bigger house. We lived in Cambridge for a while. And we bought a rundown, ramshackle, derelict house on Pleasant Street that was formerly owned by Professor Roy Glaber, who's a Nobel Prize-winning physicist. It's a mid-century modern house. It's the only one in existence now in Arlington, and we put a lot of effort into restoring it to make it look how it really should look in the twenty, early part of the 21st century. We went to the Arlington Historic Commission several times to talk about how we wanted to renovate this house. We found that commission to be so supportive of what we wanted to do. They really saw the vision that we wanted. And the house was recently featured in the Historic Commission Open Day. So having done a couple more projects now through the Historic Commission, living in a historic district, you've got to be careful what you want to do and try and do it with the best of intentions. We've just built a new garage. The house originally had a ramshackle little garage. We built a new garage. We designed it to look exactly like the house. And this was a great opportunity to have some payback and give something back to the town. I have a real interest in architecture, even though I'm not, I'm not an architect by trade. I'm a scientist, but I really wanted to be able to be on, on the commission, to help people like ourselves who come, you know, come to Arlington, don't really maybe understand what the commission's about, and try to give something. something back to the community.
That's great to hear. And I am so pleased to hear the positive experience you had. So you have a root, a basis from which to go forth as a commissioner. And I'm very grateful that you're, on top of everything else, you and your family and your partner are allowing you to give back some of your valuable time to the town. But first, I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very happy to move approval. I love your reasons for wanting to do this. I love that you love the town. And one suggestion I would make is I know that one of the sticky wickets that the Historic District Commission sometimes encounter is the issue of homeowners who want to make energy efficiency improvements to their homes and/or sometimes even just better gutters. And those can be complicated when it comes to the historic guidelines. And I know that the commissioners have worked really hard to try to be fair and to be reasonable and sometimes flexible, and how they do that to understand the competing needs there, because the town very much does want to support renewable energy and sustainable heating systems when people put them in. So I think I very much support the work of the district commissions, but just call that as something for you to become familiar with as you step into this role and maybe encounter trying to balance those concerns.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll second Mr. Helmut's motion. Thank you for your willingness to serve and it just shows, I think it's great where you have a positive experience with a commissioner or a board, you want to step that up and participate even further. That's great. And I usually don't do this, Madam Chair, but I did see your interest in Gothic cathedrals. And I happened to be in the last Gothic cathedral built in Spain recently, which is in Segovia. So I don't know if you had ever come across that, but I thought that was an interesting interest that you had between Gothic cathedrals and mid-century modern homes.
They're a little different, right? A Gothic cathedral and a mid-century modern house are a little different.
That's right, yeah.
They both present challenges with upkeep, for sure. Our house is no stranger to its challenges. But yeah, I have a real interest in those Gothic cathedrals. I mean, I'm a scientist, but I still cannot understand how they built them. And I think my wife gets tired of hearing this when we're on vacation. So the next cathedral we go to, I will say, "How on earth did they build this thing?" So, you know, I love architecture. I love all the different kinds of architecture. Arlington's got a lot of Victorians, but we've got something that's completely different. And so how does that fit in with a Historic Commission, when you've got a house that has no precedent, really? There's nothing to look at that's like our house. So how then do you make decisions? And that's why we were so impressed with the Historic Commission. They really helped us. And so I take your point very seriously. You've got to be, you've got to be sympathetic to where we are in, you know, in the 2020s. Houses were built 150 years ago. They didn't have double glazing. What do you do? So, and I've seen this, because I've been at the commission a few times, and I've seen people struggling with this. And, you know, I want to be able to give my thoughts and help people along with these renovations that are so important.
Thank you. On a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey, any further questions or comments? If not, Mr. Diggin's, I'm sorry.
Just going to quickly say thank you, you know. And just to add, I mean, architects are scientists too, you know. It's just a kind of a different science, you know. And I want to give a shout out to the bylaws, which allows me, for someone that doesn't live in the district, to, you know, be on the, on the commission, because I think it's, you know, it's good foresight on the part of the bylaws, I mean. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. On a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And I'll go back to the agenda, because I will say to our tack chairperson, I'm pretty sure someone wants to speak on open forum right before your report. So I will go back to Agenda Item 2 and thank Mr. Alessi, Senior Transportation Planner, who's worn many transportation planner hats tonight, and thank you for waiting and allowing us to do that. We have before us the RRFB Equipment Acceptance from Mast dot. I'll let you explain it.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Select Board Members. My name's John Alessi, Senior Transportation Planner in the Planning and Community Development Department. Before you, again this evening, to request that the board accept rectangular rapid flashing beacon equipment for Mast dot, shorthand RRFB. So to give you a little bit of background, so Mast dot reached out to the town last fall and other municipalities just asking if there was an interest in Mast dot procuring and delivering RFB equipment at their own cost. So in that request, they asked that we send them some potential locations, that we be interested in installing said equipment. They made a request for us to provide some speed and volume data, which we collected and gave to them, and through their own engineering review to determine which locations would be warranted from an engineering perspective for the equipment. They gave us a list of potential locations that they would be willing to provide the equipment for us to install. They also provided us with some requirements for how the equipment needs to be installed. First off, they have to be at existing crosswalks. There need to be adjacent improvements to the curb ramps in order to meet ADA accessibility. There needs to be proper visibility, so with no trees obstructing the signs. And there also has to be the ability for the equipment to be charged with solar energy, so also some tree trimming there. So with the list of locations that Mast dot offered to us, town staff did a field review to determine where we could make the required upgrades. Some locations, we found, would require a great deal of improvements needed. And I forgot to mention as well that we have a 90-day installation window from when the equipment's delivered. So this is something that they foresee being installed later this summer. So we have kind of a shorter window of time. So we really needed to think critically about, you know, where can we leverage our existing curb ramp contractor to make the improvements so that we could actually meet that window of time. So from that field review and from the list of approved locations for Mast dot, we had six of them that we felt that we could actually implement in the near term. We have Eastern Avenue at the Bracket School, Chestnut Street at Medford Street, Summer Street at Victoria Road, Mass Ave at Dundee Road, Park Ave at Walston Ave, and then Park Ave at Oakland Ave. So with these locations, you know, we're hoping to get the improvements done in the near term. And I know that there are many locations throughout the town that could use this equipment. And Mast dot has told us that they do intend on having another round of this, so we can actually prepare ahead of time and maybe get some more equipment like this, which can bring some really needed safety upgrades for pedestrians throughout the town. So the recommended motions this evening are to, you know, accept these capital contributions from Mast dot for the RFB equipment as required by state law, and to also authorize our town manager to sign the memorandum of agreement that needs to be put in place between Mast dot and the town. So that is the summary of the requests, and happy to answer any questions.
And I see tack chair, one second. I will let you speak on this, just one second. And I do appreciate the fact that it's a capital cost of approximately $130,000, $140,000.
$135,000.
Thirty-five, that Mast dot will be, do I have Mast dot in my head? It's not Mast... Oh, it is Mast dot.
It's Mast dot, yeah.
Mast dot will be doing, and I will, before I turn it over to the town manager, ask either town manager, town councilor, Mr. Alessi, can we, do we need to do two separate motions, or can we say one motion to cover both actions? Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michael Cunningham, Town Council. Unfortunately, I think it would be two separate motions, because Chapter 44, Section 53A requires acceptance, and then to authorize the manager to enter into memorandum of agreement would be a separate motion.
Okay, so whoever's making those two motions, or whomevers, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add briefly some other good news that corresponds with what John has just shared about the RRFB equipment that we've been awarded. In the recently, and the governor recently signed the Fair Share Surtax Supplemental Budget for Fiscal Year 25. Within that budget, the town was provided the opportunity to make a request. So we both requested and advocated for and ultimately received, between the House and the Senate, $150,000 that was earmarked for pedestrian safety enhancements in the community. That was requested in concert, knowing that we were pursuing this RRFB equipment, that we would then also need to fund the installation and potential curb ramp improvements. So while I don't expect that $150,000 will cover the entirety of the town's costs associated with the installation of this equipment, it will in fact cover the majority. So it is good news that we received sort of in tandem recently. I just wanted to share that.
Mr. Alessi?
I just want to add one more point that I forgot to mention, is that a lot of the locations that we submitted were locations that have been prioritized by this board, by TAC, by the school committee as kind of a starting point.
If I could ask Chairman of TAC to come up? Did you want, just because the microphone won't reach you back there. Just name for the...
Yeah, just, I live over on Hill Road. Just to point a clarification, John, you mentioned six, and then when you ran through the list, I did not hear Trader Joe's. Mass Ave, is that?
Mass Ave at Dundee Road.
At Dundee.
At Dundee, it's the cross street. I missed yours. Thank you.
Oh, no problem. Thank you for checking. Okay. Mr. Helmut? Oh, Mr. Hurd, I'm sorry. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. First off, I'll move to accept the capital contributions of RRFB equipment provided by Mast dot, and separately move to authorize the town manager to sign the memorandum of agreement attached to our agenda materials. Happy to see this. I think this is great, and a lot of these locations need it. On the, is, I don't know if this is the right time. I know we have another agenda item. We have ongoing issues at the Park Ave and Oakland Crossing. My kids use it. There's been multiple incidents there. And, you know, we're working to make that area safer. The speed regulations have been great. You know, I think the town's done a lot of work, but we're all getting, still getting correspondence about that area. And, you know, I mentioned this before. I think as part of these improvements, can we look at a bump out there as we're putting this in? Because, you know, I go by that every day, because I pull out on Park Ave there. And it's always the car that stops for the kids coming across, and some nitwits going around and trying to go through the parking area. And that's what create, I think that's what happened when the child was struck, you know, six months ago. So however we can close off that parking area right there, and, you know, bump outs is kind of the obvious way to do it, I think that would be, go a long, long way into reducing the incidence of issues there. So if that can be part of the improvements to put these in, I certainly would suggest that we do that.
Mr. Feeney, I know this is probably a little bit out of sorts, but we've been having conversations, along with the chair, tack, about short-term, long-term improvements. And I know you and I discussed this recently as this morning, something sort of germane to this. Is there anything you would like to add to that, or just to put out there, not necessarily?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think soon before this board will be, you know, something that we would call the Traffic Common Guide, that will sort of establish a toolbox, for lack of a better word, for things that we may be willing to implement in the public right-of-way in instances where it's warranted, and there'll be sort of a scoring protocol for helping to prioritize those projects. But in the instance Mr. Hurd is speaking with in regards to the corridor, we are already in the process of designing those bump outs. Whether or not that design will be ready and have the ability to be implemented at the same time with the RRFB installation, it's not something I'd be able to speak to this evening. Obviously, we are trying to do it as expeditiously as possible, but without having sort of run that by the team of engineers, it would be premature for me to speak to it. But it's a point well made, and I do believe that no matter what, curb extensions will be installed at that location to prevent that, the incidents that you're describing.
Mr. Alessi, did you want to?
Yeah, I can speak too. I know that with this specific program, we do have that 90-day installation window. So we did look at some of the other intersections along Park Ave, and where we could install the equipment in the near term, like along the existing curbs, which would be the most feasible. Those are ones that we're moving forward with right now. As an example, with Appleton Street, we would need significant curb extensions, which we are considering through the Park Ave Improvements Project. Like, we will be building those later on potentially as the design progresses. But for this program right here, it just wasn't feasible to get them implemented in the near term, whereas at Oakland Ave and Walston Ave, it was feasible. So we're trying to get those locations done as quickly as we can. And then, you know, if through the, as the design progresses, we'll be able to get those curb extensions even, move the RFBs, you know, closer in the curb extensions.
Mr. Hurd?
Yeah, I think I mentioned this before. I don't want to get too far off topic of what we're actually voting here. But I think even in these Park Ave locations that are dangerous, and we, you know, going through the process, you know, just temporary, like bullets that block, that, just make it so at these crossings, cars can't go through, or can't go around other cars. They have to just stop, wait. And now we go, you know, I know everyone's working on that. But I just think that is something that creates a safety improvement now, that also we can go to the neighbors and say, listen, you know, this, these, you know, inexpensive, ugly, temporary things are going a long way to make this area safer for kids crossing.
Definitely.
Especially since West is going to Gibbs in the, in the fall.
And I would anticipate in the fall, there'll be an agenda item from conversations with TAC, with the town manager, with Department of Public Works, for those temporary toolbox possibilities, so that when something comes up, and there is a three- to five-year capital planning process of long-term things that need to be done. But if we can somehow circumvent the process, that we say, we don't have to keep studying it every time. We have these six things we could consider right away, you know, like if you want to consider the temporary fix at Mast and Appleton, so that might expedite the process. Or we could go through that and say, none of these six quick toolbox fixes are appropriate, and we need to look at something else. But we're trying to find a way, and hopefully in the fall, we'll have a longer discussion and something to vote in with that. But we know one fix doesn't fix all. But I cut you off. I'm sorry, Mr. Hurd. Okay. Mr. Diggin's?
I'll happily second both of those motions. And I think Mr. Hurd is talking about flex posts. I'm all in favor of those quick, flex posts. A couple of questions to, I'm blanking. Mr. Alessi, Madam Chair. So you submitted a list to Mast dot. Can we, I'm interested in the whole list. Can we see that? Okay, great. And also, when Mast dot gave us the selections, did they give us a rationale for those selections? Can we see that? Because I'm interested in why they chose some and not others. So...
I will note that all the locations we submitted were approved, but like I said before, there were just some limitations and locations where, upon doing a field review, we felt that we wouldn't be able to accomplish all the necessary upgrades within the 90-day window that they've given us.
So they approved all of ours? Okay, great. That's good to know. Well, actually, another question, this may be for the town manager. So you say it won't cover, so we get another grant, I mean, from the state, you know, it won't, how much is it costing us? Because I imagine this probably came, Mast dot came to us like after the budget for Fiscal Year 25 had been. So how much is it costing? Because I'm impressed that we can, that we can do this, and it's great that we can, even with the state's helping us out. I mean, it just costs us a little bit more, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Diggin's. So every location is a little bit different, depending on the scope of the pertinent improvements that need to be made, right? Like, some of them take Eastern Ave at the Bracket School. There's a very wide swath of, you know, pristine concrete sidewalk there that we're just going to excavate, put in the foundation, and drop this in, right? That's an endeavor that's probably less than $10,000. And then you go to some of these other locations, and there aren't accessible curb ramps, and then then we need to construct them on both sides of the crossing, and then, you know, those improvements themselves might cost $10,000, and then the installation of the beacon itself could be, you know, depending on where it is and how the digging is, you know, upwards of $10,000. So every location is slightly different. The earmark we got will support, you know, a number of those installations, a portion of that earmark will also go towards some additional design and utility coordination work that needs to happen when we got underway with Phase One of the Mass Ave, Appleton project. So those funds are going to sort of offset town capital costs on a number of these endeavors.
Good. And I'll just in closing say that hopefully, me, Mass Ave or whomever is funding this, we can also, we fund, me, some of these, me, quick build ideas, because when I talk with the town manager about the flex posts, it means like, we're going to lose some of those flex posts, maybe, maybe even a lot of them, I mean, and so we have to have, I mean, some way, you know, of replacing them, and if the state, you know, or the Fed, to me, said, hey, you know, we'll help fund these, I mean, hopefully they'll come to us and say, you ready, you know, you have any ideas of where you want to put them, and we'll have the list ready to go. So that's it, thank you.
Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. I'm very happy to support both of the well-articulated motions by Mr. Hurd, and I want to express my appreciation to, first of all, to Senator Freeman and Representative Garbley for the, for the very well-timed supplemental of earmarks in the sub-budget there, and my appreciation to town manager, Mr. Lessie, and the whole team for very creatively realizing that we can leverage those assets together. And I think that really especially speaks to your responsiveness to the community, that all of us have been hearing from residents in neighborhoods that have had some really tough, really tragic and devastating pedestrian collisions. I love this list. I know that, well, and the Bracket School in Eastern Avenue, I think that, that request for improvement started three years ago, at least when I, near when I was near, joined the board, so these have been indeed longstanding improvements, and I appreciate the fact that you chose these because they're the ones that we could do now within a very short timeframe. We know there's a longer list that's approved. But I think this is a really good place, and it speaks, it speaks to, I met with a resident of Park Avenue who had a personal impact from one of those collisions, and they were talking, asking if they needed to fundraise to buy RFBs, and I very, that's how much the community is asking for these. And, you know, I appreciate that they don't have to this time, but I really appreciate the creative work that town manager and his team is doing to respond to this request and make it something that we can pull off quickly. So I'm really, really happy about this, really grateful.
Thank you. So on that, and also thanks to the town manager and the planning department for hearing this in other areas, Mass Ave and Dundee and others, and being able to hear from this board that was united with their message to say, we understand there's a process, it's years-long, but we need something done also sooner rather than later, and because of the town manager, hearing that message from all of us loud and clear, not that we needed to make it loud and clear, we were just very passionate about it, but to actually pull it off, I do want to say to the town manager and also to Mr. Lessie, but also, especially to Mr. Feeney in terms of the capital planning process, but also what you've been able to accomplish in months two to three in 12, also recognizing there's another three, four-year process. That's something that's a first since I've been on the board, and I think that's great. We're starting to do business a little differently to be responsive to what we're hearing. So on Mr. Hurd's first motion to accept the capital contributions of the rectangular rapid flashing beacon equipment provided by Mr., by Mass Ave, I must say, provided by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all those in favor, any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed on Mr. Hurd's motion, seconded by Mr. Diggins to authorize the manager to sign the memorandum of agreement between Mass Ave and the town. Any further questions and comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Lessie, for staying with us so long. You will now go to, we're getting there, Mr. Feeney, Agenda Item Under Licensees and Permit 15, for approval, Common Victory License, MVECLLC, doing business as Oakberry, I always say Akai, but it's not Akai, it's...
Asai.
Asai. Can you write it out phonetically for me? Asai, Marco Viscarelio, 476 Mass Ave, who I believe is here with us. Thank you for waiting with us. If you could, for the record, say your name correctly, which I fear I might not have, my apologies.
You did really well, actually. Thank you for that. Good evening, everybody. Marco Viscarelio, 476 Mass Ave, Arlington.
If you want to, it's pretty self-explanatory, but for people watching, they actually do watch, just want to give a brief couple of sentences, three, four, five, six.
Yeah, so I was a, an Arlington resident 30 years ago, actually right across the street at 475 Mass Ave, so now I get to see where I lived before. But we're excited to be opening an Asai Bowl. It's 100% organic, vegan, healthy option for the city of Arlington. I can say that in the time that we've been there prepping to, getting ready to open up here soon, hopefully, the town is very excited. We get a lot of folks that come knocking on our door, opening the door, and we've even gotten quite a bit of the high school, you know, teenagers that are excited to come work there as well. So there's a lot of excitement being built up around this. You know, I'm very fond of Arlington. Like I said, I lived here five years, 30 years ago, for five years when it was the Ichibund. I don't know if you guys remember that restaurant or not, but I live right above it. And so, yeah, we're, we're just excited to bring a different option to the town, you know, a healthy option, and I think the town is excited as well.
Welcome back.
Well, thank you.
My colleague, Mr. Hurd?
I'll happily move approval. I've said this a few times, I think, with some of these cognitive applications, but my office is right in the center, and I lamented for years that when I'm trying to eat healthy, there's a lot of good pizza places, Cal's own places, but when I want to eat healthy, there's limited options. So I am on a little bit of a health kick now, but you never know how long it's going to last, so you got to open pretty quickly for me to jump in there, but...
Sounds good.
Very excited for this. I think there's a need for it, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Second? Seconded by Mr. Helmut. My daughter always loves when I butcher Asai and say Akai, so I have to keep doing it. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I'll just say, I love the fact that you have no prior food, experience in the food business, me, but I, it's great, me, only get experience, me, by doing something, so I think it's courageous, you know, and, and I think, I, I'm sure the town is very supportive, me, and it will be even more supportive, and it may be because you are new at this, me, that you have a truly impressive comprehensive maintenance program. It's really good. I, I, I won't say, you know, it should be the gold standard, because I think I'm getting out of my realm, you know, on that, but, but, it's just extensive, and I'm happy to see something like that, and, and I'll just add, you may, may be aware of this, and I don't know to what extent it may have been communicated to you by other people on staff, but when it comes to baiting, me, for pests, we can't mandate this at all, but we do try, we encourage, at least the town itself is not using what's called second-generation anticoagulant redenticides because, me, raptors will eat them, eat the rodents that have eaten it, and, and, you know, kind of bleed out, so, so like I said, I don't know to what extent that's been communicated to you by folks, but every once in a while, I'll mention that just so that people are aware of it. But once again, good luck, and you're going to have, you have a little competition, you know, in, in the center, I mean, there's another place that just opened up Rush Bowl.
Yeah. Fully aware of that.
So, so...
We're now competitors, we're complementing each other.
Yeah, there you go. You're on the other side of the street.
We're bringing more to the town, so it's...
Yeah, you're on the other side of the street.
Yeah, exactly. It's all good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
On a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Helmut, any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous vote. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, folks.
Agenda Item 16, approval of a Common Victory License, Singh Brothers, 86 LLC, doing business as Big Daddy's Pizza, two, Darjit Singh, 86 Mass Ave.
Oh, no.
Oh, you know, okay.
Yes, you know, yes.
Joining us by Zoom, good to see you, thank you.
Hello, hello, everyone?
Hello, good, good to, we can hear you fine, if you could say your name correctly, if I didn't say it correctly.
Yes, it's Darjit Singh.
Okay, thank you. And if you want to say a few sentences about your application for Big Daddy's Pizza, two?
Definitely. It's 86 Massachusetts Avenue, Arlington, Mass, and 02474. It's actually Pizza Place, and we, we have been open quite a few months now, but we was having some kind of issue like getting license and all that, so finally we got approved, and we applied for Common Vic, and I think that's what we're here for today.
Okay, thank you. Turn to my colleagues. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I will make a motion to approve the license, me, and it's good to see, you know, the next generation, me, of the, of the pizza shop at that location, so good luck.
Thank you very much.
Second by Mr. Hurd. Any further questions and comments? If not, on a motion to approve by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous vote. It is approved. Welcome, and thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Agenda Item 17, Common Victory License, Rum Ruai, Moon Kong Chokdek, Inc., doing business as Suman Puracharya, Ta Wino, Ta Wino, sorry, 444 Mass Ave. Are they joining us by Zoom? If anyone is there representing 444 Mass Avenue, I apologize if I didn't say it correctly, doing business as Suman. If not, I'll just ask Ms. Mar, for some reason you see somebody come in before we end the agenda, if you can let us know.
I think it was Mrs. Ferrin.
I don't need a motion to table, I can just keep going, and if I want to take it out of turn, we will. So we'll now go to Citizens Open Forum. If anyone would like to speak on the Citizens Open Forum, who's joining us by Zoom, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, doesn't have anyone here. I want to speak on the open forum. If not, open forum is closed, and we will now go to Traffic Rules in Order. Thank our TAC chairman. Agenda Item 18, Summer Street Propose Safety Zone. There was someone who's away on vacation up in the mountains that was going to try to Zoom in under open forum for this agenda item. That's why I made you wait, I apologize, but obviously that didn't happen. If you could just say your name and position for the record.
And just one, one sidebar thought I had while John was up here with the RFBs. Five of those six locations had flags put in within the last year and a half. So we actually have done a stepwise, we've recognized that we did the fastest thing we could, and then Mr. Feeney and Mr. Lessie worked the system to actually take that next step forward. Then once calming's in there, maybe we take the next step, so it's actual progress. Anyway, so right now, the topic, first topic I have tonight is on the Summer Street Propose Safety Zone. As you all remember, we rescinded the SSRs all around town and on Summer Street, and as we were looking there, we're going, all right, we've taken the higher speeds away, but that particular area that has that Summer Victoria Crosswalk has been recognized as an issue with lots of children crossing the street. There's limited parking on the park side, you've got Buzzell Field with two different playing fields, as well as Catholic practice field there. So oftentimes, there's three games going on at the same time, and then another one following immediately, so you've got a continual stream of kids crossing the road there. And, you know, I live in that area, I watch the kids run out of their cars and go running across Summer Street, and I just, I don't want to see the day when something like that, where we have to actually come back and have a conversation if somebody actually gets hurt. So it seemed like the perfect place, after our conversation of safety zones when we did the one in the Heights, that this would be the first park we'd bring to you all and say, hey, this is the first one in the park spectrum. So the proposal there, as you can see, you know, the whole stretch basically from Mill Street over to Mystic Street, you know, a little bit banged in on the edges so people can get on the road and actually have time to see the signs to understand they have a reduction in the speed there. And potentially now, as you heard from John, there'll be an RRFB that's going to be going in at the Summer Victoria Crosswalk, depending on how much curb bump out we get there. That may actually constitute a little bit of calming in that stretch, so not only do we put the signs up, which, you know, are signs, they don't necessarily do anything, but the calming is the next step is really awesome if we can get that into place. The next slide, please. If you remember, or you may or may not remember, when, when I was here last with the Arlington Heights Zone, I told you I was going to bring this format slide back for every single safety zone, this is our standard. Here it is. You know, that's a heavily trafficked, heavily used section. There's very little parking on the field side of the road there, and actually it causes half the problem with visibility, that parking that's there, people are parked everywhere. There have been a number of accidents there, partly, if you remember, Summer Street's coming eastbound there, it's got a curve, and the cars are parked, so by the time the traffic can actually see the pedestrians, if they're well into their safe, safe stopping distance, so they slam on the brakes and then get rear-ended, which is often, you know, we've had a couple of vulnerable user strikes there as well, but it's really more vehicle accidents. They have enough time to stop, it's, it's an emergency braking kind of situation, so. So there's a number of accidents happening there. The fields are pulling in people, Dunkin' and Fresh Pond Seafood attract vehicular traffic, it's just a busy area, heavily traveled, and it meets the criteria of about a quarter of a mile. And then just from a picture point of view of where the signs are going to start and end, just to be specific, I used words and pictures, I figured that would make it easier for us to cite. You know, I walked, walked it several times, we had a discussion at TAC of where to start it and where to stop it, but it's basically that whole stretch in there as much as we can, once you're on the road and going forward. And last but not least, so TAC, today, we're requesting that we approve the establishment of the safety zone along Summer Street, approximately 250 feet east of Summer Mill, and stopping about 150 feet west of Summer Street, Mystic Street, and per the signs.
Thank you. Turn it over to my colleagues. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. I will move, happily move approval. Thank you for the work. Just a question, Madam Chair, possibly to Attorney Cunningham, is, for the vote, do we need to do this? So this is, the recommended request is beginning approximately 250 feet east, approximately 120 feet west, and I know that we went through this last time, we need a safety zone. What, is that specific enough? Do we need to go with street addresses?
Madam Chair, I believe that is specific enough, but to the extent that a board member wanted to make it more specific by including an address, certainly acceptable as well.
But the word approximately is okay?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Then I leave my motion in the stands.
Mr. Hurd?
I'll second that. Certainly, as a former parent of children that use these fields a lot, luckily we've moved on to the major's fields, but the, it certainly is chaos, and, you know, I think this will go a long way into making it better. You know, I think there's some more work we need to do on the crosswalk, and particularly maybe some painting, some way to get people to really understand that they can't, people don't, they, they still seem to think it's okay to park right up against the crosswalk where you can, even when there's a sign, you know, whether you think you're there for 10 minutes or a half hour, whatever we can do to try to eliminate people from illegally, albeit parking next to the crosswalk. And then I mentioned this a couple of years ago, it didn't really go anywhere, and I'm not sure if there's anything that can be done. It's sort of teetering on scope with this issue, but, you know, a lot of, you had mentioned, there's really not a lot of parking for a lot of fields. There's two baseball, softball fields, there's the turf field for Arlington Catholic, and it all flows into the neighborhood, which is, you know, if your kid's playing there, you got to park somewhere. But this park is permit parking on the backside, near the bike path, and my understanding that is that most of those permits are used during the day, and if there's any way to study how those permits are used, because I generally would go in the back, and people, you know, you can't legally park there, but you run the risk of getting a ticket, and, you know, but there's always parking there, in the permit parking. So if it's an instance where we could transition those permits into permit parking only till 5:00, and then allow it to be open to the public for a certain period of time while the fields are in use, it's going to go a long way to alleviate the congestion that you feel on Summer Street and in some of the neighborhoods. And if it's not, if the people using the permits are there... And if it's not, if the people using the permits are there at all hours of the day, then, then it doesn't work. But if there's any way to look into that, to see if we can utilize those spaces that seem to me to be unutilized in the evening, it's going to really help the whole area.
Hop, hopping on that. Fresh Pond Seafood also has about thirty spots, which are only used during the day, and they're almost always empty once you hit the end of the day. I don't know who, I think that's owned by Marak.
That's private.
Right, whatever, I'm not sure it's possible. We didn't follow up, we just, it came up in our Tac discussion, but we weren't sure where to go with it, to the, to the point of what you were saying. But potentially, there's another set of spots right there, so.
Thank you. Mr. DeCourse?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Stubby. I'll support this as well. Just, um, Mr. Hurd had mentioned some of the parking challenges, the signage being there on Summer Street. You know, we had voted this a while ago. Where current on all our no parking signage? It's just a matter now of, people may not be following it, maybe we have to take a look at that further, is that?
We are, but, you know, if you remember, we approved the Summer Victoria Crosswalk changes. The only thing that's changed has been the flags that got, that got put up by me. We haven't done any of the other things that were in that memo, and it may be overtaken by events, because if you're going to put an RFB in, that's one of the things, if we can do the curb bump outs, you, you address some of the visibility issue. If the bump outs are far enough out, if they're eight or nine feet out, now you don't have the problem with the parked cars, because you're standing on something solid that's, you know, safe, but you're far enough out where you can see the cars and the cars can see you. Because the big problem right now is if you're at the curb trying to stand there waiting for traffic, they can't see you, and they're, they're going whatever speed they happen to be going there. I don't think they know what the speed limit is there, but.
Thank you.
So, so we haven't finished that, but it may end up waiting for the redesign of the bike path from, you know, the Minuteman over the Hill Life, he's, um.
Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, so, I mean, Mr. Hurd does bring up, I mean, a, an issue regarding, you know, the, um, possibility of parking, you know, and, so I, I guess, I mean, to the extent that it is with Inscope, I mean, like, what can we do, you know, to advance that, I mean, or should we just make that another agenda item where we do try to figure out how to advance, looking into that, I think. Because I think it could be a relatively simple determination, you know, I mean, and, and we make a determination. Yes, we can do something, no, we can't. If we can, then what do we do? You know, I think we could knock this out, you know, in two, three months, you know, with maybe one or two meetings. Maybe just one.
How about if I ask our Vice Chair to speak and communicate with Mr. Hurd and Mr. Feeney? And if and when you think it's an appropriate agenda item, you just let me know, and, um, you know, we have the August meeting, but maybe September. Um, and then you just tell me when it's to go, is that okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Feeney, like you can say no, is that okay with you?
That works.
Uh, Mr. Hurd, sorry.
Well, I would just mention, it's something like, I, I don't, I don't want to go down a road as we get too late, but I think that is something that we'd have to make a determination in the fall for, because there's not a lot of use in those fields in the summer, and I think it's really just going down there a couple nights and be like, yeah, there are a lot of spots here, and, because if someone has a permit, do they need it all day? As long as it's some extra spots, I'm sure they'll be fine. So I, I think, you know, and we can connect, but I think it would be something that would be best looked at in the fall when the fields are in a little more use, and then we can, you know, really look at the usage. But me and Mr. Diggins can take that off.
One, one of the things Tac has talked about, in a broader sense, you know, because we looked at Thompson School in the park there, and Luciano Field, and it's very little parking, but you know, it's a pretty big field. If you could take twenty-five feet of it and make diagonal parking, but now you're taking away park space, which is, that's kind of a, a tough do, I think, which is why we didn't pursue it. But I'm going, you know, I look every time I walk by there and go, just give me a room, this, these fields are huge. And it would take care of the parking issue, you know. Buzzell, Buzzell's a little tighter. You could do it up at the upper end, as you mentioned, or even on the, you know, what's going to happen when they redesign it, I don't know. There's options, but we may need to get creative.
If, if I could, I'd, I'd actually use the phrase non-starter.
I knew that when I brought it up, Steve, so it's like, yeah, I'll throw it out there anyway.
Why not? Why not? Any further questions and comments, if not on a motion by Mr. Helmer to approve establishment of a safety zone along Summer Street, beginning approximately two-hundred-and-fifty feet east of the Summer Mill Street intersection and stopping a hundred, approximately a hundred-and-fifty feet west of the Summer Street Mystic Street intersection, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, unanimous vote. We now go to Agenda Item nineteen, Park Ave. and Broadway Post Special Speed Regula, Regulations.
Awesome, thank you. So this is kind of one of those success story mini briefings. You know, we started at the prompting of the board a number of years back, now a couple of years back, to look at the speed limits across town. That prompted the SSR work, the first two of which were Broadway and Park Ave. You know, we've since gone and rescinded everything above twenty-five in the whole town, so that's, that's all a really good process. And then as part of our original plan, we, we did a speed study before and after, just to see, okay, what, what difference did it make to put all those signs up, take the other ones down, and did it really make any difference? So we haven't really done, well, we've done some other things on Park, but not so much on Broadway. We really just took signs down. So, you know, starting at the top level for Broadway here, I, I'll stay just at the high level for both of them. If you want to go in the details, we can, but that was really more for FYI kind of depth, anyway. So, so on Broadway, you know, overall, where really we had a short stretch that was sturdy, and those speed limits signs were kind of hidden, I think they were hard to see. I don't know what speeds we were going before, they weren't really particularly high, but they've actually come down like three and a half percent. You go, okay, well, that's something, we put up nine signs there. You know, that three and a half percent reduces the number of crashes, reduces the severity of the crashes, so. Oh, good, it's actually not bad. The eighty-fifth percentile speed is like twenty-seven point something. So it's a couple of miles an hour over the speed limit, which also isn't bad particularly. It's not going to be enforced at that level, anyway, and that's for, for most of the traffic, so. So from an overall point of view, that actually is an okay story. So if we go to the third slide now. Park Ave, obviously, we have a lot more stuff going on. You know, we, we took down the speed limit signs. We put up the new signs. APD started enforcing. We put in the flashing signs. We put in flags at Oakland. We put in flags at Wallaston. We put in flags at Bow, Bow River. So there's a lot of different things that happened over there. Interestingly, up at the top of the hill, near where the flasher is, and APD was actively enforcing, you know, the speed limits, the speeds have dropped by almost twenty percent, or twenty, over twenty percent on average, which is huge, basically. I mean, but it went from thirty-five to twenty-five, so, okay, maybe people are starting to pay attention. Appleton, not so much. You know, there wasn't really a change in the speed limit, and I know that whether they, they went slower up at the top of the hills, so they sped up as they went down or not, or because it was a little bit higher, or it could just be normal variation in the data and all of that, but. But overall, it's, it's kind of a success story, because now people can't go, gee, they're going fifty miles an hour. They're not doing that anymore, or they don't seem to be, maybe at one o'clock in the morning, or something like that, where there's nobody there. But it's at least part of a solution, and then with the Park Ave redesign, when we get there, potentially, you know, maybe we get a quick build solution somewhere up there to mimic the design, so we can get something in place and see what we can actually do out there. That'll get us some calming to go along with it. We can actually then do another speed study and see, see what kind of effect that's going to have, so. So when I step back and look at this, I think this is a really good story for us to be able to tell people in the public when they say, oh, it's, people are going so fast. Well, no, not so much anymore, right? This is actually one of the things that we've done that we can point to and go, yeah, that actually really did make a difference, so.
Mr. Helmer?
Thank you. Do we need a motion for this? Yeah, I'll move receipt, and appreciate this data, appreciate the work. Just a question, Madam Chair, what's the approximate, I know it's a range, because it depends on what you buy, but how much does a speed feedback sign cost for equipment and installation, generally, or the ballpark range?
I would peg it somewhere between, probably rough order of magnitude, in between ten and fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's good. Uh, I'm really glad to see this, and I think I want to reinforce what Mr. Stubby said about the, the additive nature of the safety implementations that we're doing, that we layer them on top of each other. The RFBs, this, the speed feedback signs, the APD enforcement has, has certainly been noticed, as we have had noticed through some recent communications with the board on both sides of that issue. But, but I think that it's working, and, um, I want to also reinforce something that my colleague said before, that I would also add my voice to those encouraging the town manager to consider when it, when it is at all feasible, quick build, um, infrastructure that would also add another layer, you know, where we can, because the, the improvements, I, I appreciate that we're designing bump outs on Park Ave. I know that the actual funding and, um, implementation of that can be a very long period of time. So when it, when it's going to be a while, if there's a way that we can use temporary materials that will still deter people from doing things like going around a stop vehicle at, at Oakland, for instance, that, that would have my support. I know that we have to balance a lot of things, including availability of personnel to install and maintain those, but I think that's a way, again, just being additive and also being responsive to residents who, I think, are learning through the interactions with the town, with the board, that these are long horizons for improvement, but that if we can do things like RFBs, like police enforcement, like the speed feedback signs that we're talking about now, and maybe some quick build, um, infrastructure, that those, that will show that a sustained commitment to this while we wait for the, for the eventual long-term, permanent and, and gold standard designs. So that's my, uh, my turn to go a little bit, creep a little bit out of scope on this, but to stay within the same general discussion of kind of where I've evolved in this. Uh, but, but overall, just appreciation that we are using these, and that we're getting data from them, and that we're using them to make decisions is really, really positive, and I look forward to seeing more of this as we can afford to do it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sir, a second?
Second.
By Mr. Hurd. I want to thank the Chair of Tac and our liaison for, um, these agenda items. I know it seems like there's probably a lot, and if you want to blame anyone, blame the previous two chairs that met with Tac and, um, helped streamline the different requests, not only making sure we don't send too many, but making sure, um, we follow up on them and they come back, so.
Madam Chair, it's a very nice problem, nice problem to have.
And I do know that, just strain a little bit, but on, um, the Park Ave, uh, speed limit issue, um, we have received correspondence, um, as well as, um, a couple of correspondence about people who, residents who are observing in the morning, um, the speed limit, and our people behind them really weren't happy about that. So that's also been forwarded to, we forwarded to the town manager and the police chief, um, so they're aware of that. And I know the manager, um, is looking at, I don't know if he's put out a RFP, but regarding the flashing sign we have up there, I think you're possibly looking at putting that out to bid again, or? Do I have that right?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've been, uh, going through the process of selecting equipment, and we've been in touch with at least, uh, one vendor, whom is already on contract in hopes that perhaps we can proceed with that installation, uh, more rapidly than having to formally draw up bid specifications and plans and sort of put it out in the street, as we say. So we're trying to find a way to, uh, potentially fast-track that project.
And that's the flashing sign that shows you the speed limit, that some were, um, very grateful it was up there, but then now that it's up there, we're hearing, can it be bigger? So, um, and, and the town manager responded to that, so. On, um, and again, this probably could have gone under consent agenda, but, um, thank you, Mr. Helmer, and my colleagues for indulging in, on a motion to receive by Mr. Helmer, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further questions and comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote, thank you. We now go to, oh, Ms. Mar.
Madam Chair, the Adam and Forrest Suman is actually on Zoom, if you would, if you have any going back.
That would be great. With my colleagues' permission, we will go back to Agenda Item seventeen for approval. Common Victual License, um, at four-four-four Mass Ave, doing business as Suman, Purachaya, Tawino, Tawino. Um, if you could zoom in and let me know that you can hear me, and please say your name correctly, and I apologize if I didn't.
Just trying to prove that depends.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, yes, yeah, you pronounced correct, yes.
Thank you for joining us. Can, can you just say your name again, so maybe I'll say it right the next time?
Yes, um, my name is Purachaya Tawino.
Okay, and you are looking for a Common Victual License for your business at four-forty-four Mass Ave? Would you like to say a sentence or two about your business that you'd like to open?
Yes. Yes, please, yes.
Sure, go right ahead.
Yes, um, we, uh, we would like to open, um, like, um, sushi and ramen at the four-four-four Massachusetts Avenue, Arlington, yes.
Thank you. Um, I'll turn to my colleagues who join me on the Select Board. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Me, I will be happy to motion, uh, make a motion to approve the license for this establishment, and, and to say that I am excited, you know, about your menu. You know, uh, you, I love sushi, you know, I love ramen, you haven't seen that combination. Um, and the things on your menu, I mean, really are, um, um, different, I mean, in a positive way. I mean, it's almost like a fusion of sorts, I mean, so, so, um, I'm excited. And I think this is healthy, too, Mr. Hurd, you know, so, so, I mean, so.
So you've made Mr. Diggins very happy and very hungry.
Yeah, thank you so much.
A motion by Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmer?
Look at that, and I will just add that we appreciate that you've chosen Arlington as a place for your business, and we wish you the best of success.
Yeah, thank you so much.
If, any further questions or comments? If not, on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmer, to approve and say, welcome to Arlington, and you're ready to start your business, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote, you're all set. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, have a nice day, thank you.
You too, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ms. Mar and Mr. Helmer, for giving the heads up on that. I like to have a clean agenda. We'll now go to Agenda Item twenty, um, open position on Zoning Board of Appeals Associate Member. I believe this is on, so we can start the process to advertise for this position. Attorney Cunningham? Oh, no, did you want to say something or not?
No, no, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay. What we'll need is to advertise the position, and then, um, any of my colleague or colleagues are willing to volunteer their time to screen the applicants and hold the interviews? If you can let me know either tonight or later on in the week, that would be great. Okay, um, we don't necessarily need to vote for that, do we? No, okay.
I'll, I'll just say, me, if no one else wants to, I, I'll be happy, you know, too, but if other people do want to, by all means, I mean, uh, don't let me, like, get in the way, you know, so. That's my way of saying to you, Madam Chair, me, that no one else steps up.
I graciously accept you volunteering, and if you can work with Ms. Mar regarding the posting, what we put up before, and then if you feel you need another colleague to do it with you, let us know, and we'll get someone else to do that, but.
Yep, all set, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Welcome.
I'll call you up now, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, we'll go to Agenda Item twenty-one, the Run-Walk Application. Um, I want to thank Ms. Mar and everyone in the Select Board Office, along with Attorney Cunningham, who's been doing a lot of things, uh, in a very short amount of time, including this application. I know, um, the, I think it's a turkey trot, Andy Doan has, um, been waiting for this, and, uh, the policy, um, is brand new, and we're setting it, and we've had a chance to review it, and it's, uh, document, work in progress as we move forward. If there's something we need to further clarify, or something that we didn't add, um, town councils inform me that we can always modify and, and edit it in the future, but we really need to have a process so that, um, when applicants come forth, um, they, a lot of times, it's a fundraiser, their organization, as well as town employees, don't have to keep recreating the whale over and over again. We have a policy outlined that hopefully will, um, expedite that process. And Attorney Cunningham, you, I, it's kind of redundant, but you've had a chance to look this over?
Yeah, I, thank you, Madam Chair. I think it effectively addresses some of the concerns that Arlington Police have raised over the years.
over the years regarding differing routes. I think, as the Chair noted, in the past, there've been some complications with applicants coming forward with different routes. However, it is a work in progress, and to the extent that there are concerns from Board members, those can be addressed as part of this process.
And if I could ask Ms. Mar, I know there's some interface or coordination for one of the sites with the Rec Department, which we need to work with them and not dictate to them in terms of what needs to be done, but you feel what's in the policy will outline to make sure that happens appropriately?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes. I spoke with Natasha Warden, who is the Rec Director over at the Rec Department, and she's overseen this and has approved it as well. This route will also need approval from the Parks and Rec Commission, which their application is attached to the back of ours. When they use Hills Hill Field, they need permission through the Rec Department. So as a one-stop shop all kind of, they can apply through us, and we can send it to Parks and Rec, or if they give it to Parks and Rec, Natasha can forward it over to us, and it's all in one application now.
Okay, and so as we go through this going forward, if you could set up the process with the Parks and Rec Director, Natasha Warden, I assume we'll ask them to get the Park and Rec piece of it done first, and then this will be the last stop.
That's practice.
Okay. So, Mr. Hurd?
Happy to move approval on this. I think this, we've talked about this for a number of years, so it's good to see this come to fruition and save some time for the Board, where we, you know, are kind of reviewing on a case-by-case basis the route. My only question, and I don't know if anyone can answer this, and I'm certainly all about all the safety that is necessary to make this work, but when we generally have applications, have we ever required eight details? I'm just wondering if that makes it cost prohibitive.
I want to answer this, but I want to make sure the manager, for this type of event.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. That is a, I shared a similar concern, given the number, and knowing that for a four-hour detail for eight officers, that would be costly. However, that number was proposed and is based on experience with this exact route. And while, in years prior, we may not have required hiring eight, we've necessarily had to staff it with eight. And take a Sunday morning, for example, when you only have four sector cars out there, it's next to impossible for us to pull all of those sector cars and assign them to these very sort of high-density, high-volume crossings with conflicts, and expect them to be able to appropriately staff that, given the call volume in, you know, every sector across town. So this is what was believed to be necessary to ensure public safety.
Yeah, and I'm not second-guessing that at all, and I trust the expertise of the individuals in the public safety that went into developing this plan. It just struck me, you know, these are meant to be fundraisers, and I just wondered if there was a point where having that many details meant that it just wasn't feasible for use? Because we want to have a consistent state route, but we don't want to just scare away every 5K that would use the town.
Mr. Feeny?
Understood, and thank you again. You know, shared a similar concern, and what I had proposed, or what we had discussed, is potentially using officers who are near the start line after everyone had, you know, passed through that first important checkpoint, then having them go sort of in reverse to staff one of the other critical crossings. But in their experience, a lot of these races are operated in waves, where the competitive runners go out first.
Yeah, I've been in one, so.
Yeah. And then the more recreational runners come after, and it happens over an extended period of time. So you really don't have that guarantee where that person at that first crossing, everyone will have passed, and that they'll be able to get to the last crossing, for example, by the time the more competitive runners are there. So we did try to, you know, push for that analysis to see if there would be any way to limit or restrict the number of detail officers. But again, I think when it comes to road races of this nature, especially on Mass Ave, we're just going to have a lot of potential conflict points with other crossings that, you know, need to be or should be appropriately staffed.
Sure, and again, I'm not trying to second-guess it, and I'm sure when someone has a road race in Somerville, they have far more than eight. So I'm sure there's a way to do it. I just, it struck me, I was like, whoa, seems like a lot.
Well, the one good thing about the, what appears to be a younger workforce at the Arlington Police Department is what their rate is. Not that I'm saying that I'm negotiating for anyone on that, but, Mr. Helmut?
I think you have just a question to the Town Manager. Do you anticipate any typical problems with availability of that many detail officers on a Sunday morning?
Thank you, Mr. Helmut, for the question. To date, a detail for a weekend road race has never not been filled, so it's generally easy to fill on a weekend morning.
Was that a second?
Sure, I'll second that. Have we had any feedback or presented this yet to any of the groups that we kind of do these annual races for, incorporate that, or is that, I think Attorney Cunningham said this is a work in progress, and by the way, it's really, really good work, but have we had any feedback down? I'm just curious what we've heard, or is that to come later?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Helmut. I would actually defer to Ms. Mar, who's been effectively running point on the development of this route.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. At this time, we have not presented it. We had taken one of the routes that was approved, and the police thought was the best one, but we have not submitted it to other organizations for their approval. I will note that the Turkey Trot, Andy Doan, has reached out, and she's willing to move forward with this application. This was the route that they had actually requested, so this is a highly, a lot of people want this route, so there's only one other organization that uses a different route, and maybe we can work with the Police Department to kind of get a better idea for that.
Thank you. Well, credit works, too, to Ms. Mar for this. Not only the thinking behind this and the streamlining, but, and I know this is a small thing, but it's not small for the public, this is a fillable PDF form, and that's not something that municipalities are very good at. So thank you for dragging the Select Board into the 21st century with this. I would love to see more fillable PDFs, because that is a big usability improvement for the public. So whatever you did on this one, more would be fabulous.
We're already working on a bunch of special event applications that will be fillable.
I couldn't be happier by that. A question, I think, for my colleagues, because I think this is presented not only as an application, but as a policy. Does this mean that we will not consider other alternate routes? And I'll just leave it there, because I don't know, you know? But what are we doing here tonight? I think the Town Manager may have a...
Feeny and then Mr. Hurd?
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. I just wanted to note that there is and will be another approved route, but it would not actually be one that would be voted upon or be brought before the Select Board, because for the smaller races, they will be geared towards the reservoir, but will never find their way onto the public right-of-way. So there will be yet a separate route that's already well-known and approved, but for the, there'll be a cutoff number for the number of participants, where if it's a small race, like, it's going to go here, and it can be approved solely by the Park and Recreation Commission. I understand your question could apply more broadly to other potential routes involving the right-of-way, and I don't venture to have an answer to that now. I just wanted to note there is another route.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, I don't have necessarily a view on that, but I think just wanted to raise that, because I think that could be a point of feedback we get at some point along the lines that we can address at a future date. But, I mean, I will say, I appreciate the rationale for this, because these do take up a lot of time, and I think people spend a lot of time trying to craft their own routes, and the police spend a lot of time trying to approve them, so I certainly want to give this a go. I think Ms. Mar had something, too.
I'll just note that the cutoff for the rez is 150 people. I confirmed that with the rec director there. So anything under 150 can go to the recreation, and anything above that would have to use this route, unless going forward, maybe we add an additional route.
Mr. Hurd, did you?
No, I was going to make a comment, but one comment, I would just say, this would all just be easier. We should just, as a standard, change them to 1K races, and then it'll be easy. I'll do all of them.
I'll do all the races. They want the 5K. I did ask somebody that question, but they want the 5K, so, Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I have to say, given APD's concerns, I mean, having the eight details that are there is what makes this really palatable to me, you know, otherwise I was going to, you know, I was going to go along with it, but just with a sense of queasiness, you know, so, but I was going to voice that queasiness, but now, now I don't have to, you know? And so, so my question, not that I'm going to have to pay it, but roughly, like, how much will it cost? Any further details?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Diggins. On a Sunday morning, it would be roughly $3,000.
All right, so, so nothing to sneeze at, you know, so, okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Decorsy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I view this, and talked to Ms. Mar, the couple prior races, that this is going to be very helpful for groups. We've received calls over the years from different groups that, where they may have wanted to tweak the route, or where they felt like they could staff intersections and try to cut down the cost. I think this is important just for notice to groups. This is the eight approved details, and even the route, because it also creates a burden for us to have everywhere you're getting a lot of inquiries in terms of, well, can we change this or change that? And it seems to me for the 5K route, just to have this is helpful. And as far as Mr. Feeny's point, in terms of maybe working backwards on a race, aside from the waves, the first detail isn't until about the midpoint of the race anyway, so you really don't have that ability to backtrack anyway. But I think the notice of the number of details upfront is really an important feature, because a group will know before they make that decision, and maybe they then have to determine what their entrance fee will be, or what additional fundraising they may have to get for sponsors.
Mr. Hurd?
I think we should definitely not allow people to self-police their own decisions.
Okay, on a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Helmut, any further questions and comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous vote. We go to Agenda Item 22, Discussion and Vote, Town Manager Contract Renewal. As we know, this is a year-long process, which some of us, me, have done it quite a few times, but this is the first step, and Mr. Feeny's contract is in August to August, so this is the end of July meeting. Mr. Decorsy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and hard to believe that Mr. Feeny is nearing the end of his second year of the contract. The contract began on August 1, 2023, and Attorney Cunningham had provided us with a memorandum, and the contract states that within a year of the termination of the agreement, if the Board intends to renew the agreement, we shall notify the Town Manager of our intent in writing that we would like to do so, and then the parties shall commence negotiation of a mutually acceptable successor agreement. I would like to move that we provide that written notification to Mr. Feeny that we intend to renew the agreement, and can discuss the negotiation at a later time. Speaking for myself, I've been very happy with the job that Mr. Feeny has done. I think he's done a great job, and I think it, as a town, we would like to keep him here for another contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Hurd?
Enthusiastic second.
Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. This is the easiest vote I've taken tonight. I'm very happy to support this motion.
Thank you.
I was going to flip a coin, me, but it was going to be a two-headed coin, and I was going to take heads.
Thank you. And I don't anticipate this, and I do want to thank Attorney Cunningham, and had a conversation with Mr. Feeny, for providing the memo to the Board and moving forward in the way I've been advised. Well, the first advice is, the minute I ask for something that I shouldn't be asking out of Town Council, I will let it be known. But in terms of just defining legal language and timelines and things like that, both Attorney Cunningham and the Town Manager have indicated to me that that's not only allowed by law, but that's appropriate. And if it does get to the point that we need to have outside counsel, that was done twice in the past, but that was pre-Mr. Chaplaine and others. I don't anticipate that. And then moving forward, I was going to ask Mr. Decorsy to be on the Subcommittee with me to, since he was Chair for the previous Town Manager, Mr. Feeny's contract, moving forward, also to keep me on the timeline. If something slips, not that I don't remember everything, but believe it or not, sometimes I forget. So, and we'll keep everybody else up to speed on that. So if there are no further, Attorney Cunningham, sorry.
Mr. Feeny, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank Madam Chair for including this item on the agenda tonight, so we can get notification out in a timely fashion pursuant to Section 13 of the contract. And I can work with the Select Board's office, if you'd like me to, to make sure that gets out.
Yes, please. That was one of the other things, I'm like, after we vote tonight, can you get the language? So, thank you, Attorney Cunningham. So on a motion to begin the one-year process for the Town Manager's contract renewal by Mr. Decorsy, seconded by Mr. Hurd, any further discussion and comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous vote. We go to new business. Ms. Mar?
New business, thank you.
Attorney Cunningham?
No new business, thank you.
Mr. Feeny, our Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to share with the Board that we are in the process of trying to finalize details for doing a curbside collection of residents' unwanted trash barrels and bins that will be geared towards the recycling of those products as bulky, rigid plastic. We're trying to work through the details of exactly what facility may be able to take that much material on short notice, and what, you know, apparent contamination there could be, because some items might have metal elements, and whether or not that, you know, can be acceptable in some small rate in trying to negotiate appropriate rates. So I do hope to have some final details and be able to make an announcement this week. I just wanted to share that with the Board this evening.
And I do want to say, the trash barrel Armageddon that initially started for Ryder Street, but then the day of the event, the Town Manager and Police Chief were down there, I think within 14, 24 minutes, and canceled it and issued an apology, which I think, I was going to call and suggest you do that, but you'd already done it. I do appreciate that, because, you know, we tried it, it didn't work, but now, and I know right after that Ryder Street cancellation, I happened to be in Town Hall the very next morning for a pre-arranged meeting with the Town Manager, and when I was leaving, his next meeting was with department heads to begin this process, which you just outlined that people have been asking for, so I do appreciate that. Any other new business? I'm sorry.
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Decorsy?
No new business.
Mr. Diggins? Mr. Hurd?
No new business.
Mr. Helmut?
No new business.
Oh, my, okay. Just three quick things. We did receive, I don't know if I was the only one who received it, but correspondence from the Conservation Commission, or I may have asked it to be forwarded to my colleagues. I'm asking for Ms. Mar and the Town Manager and/or Town Council to really look into that and see what it is, if anything, we're being requested to do. The way I see it right now, it's not something, if it's a request to ask Board, well, I'll wait to see what the request is and whether it's something applicable for an agenda, but I'm also very cognizant, aware of the fact of every Board Commission Committee has their own framework of what they discuss, deliberate, and vote on. And if it is something appropriate for this Board to, you know, and maybe it's just a discussion, but maybe it's not. So I'm not really sure what the request is. If anyone else is aware of it, I believe it was also sent to you all. Otherwise, I'll wait to hear from Ms. Mar and Attorney Cunningham on that. And then, just moving forward, probably sometime in the fall, we'll be hearing about Novus, which is getting phased out, and something else will be replacing that soon. And I have had conversations where I've begged... And I have had conversations where I've begged, I haven't borrowed or stolen anything, with the town manager regarding, I know each office in the, on the town side is going online digital for transactions that require payment, and I believe perhaps a town clerk might have been next to get the okay for that, because I know we're doing it in phases. But I'm really advocating for the three transactions that the town clerk has to do versus the 23, which I've sent to you, that the Select Board has to do, and I would most respectfully say that we should be next in line, just because we have so many transactions like that, and it's, you know, people come in and we have to say, go find an ATM, we need exact cash, and things like that. But the manager and I have had conversations about that, he's aware of it, so, but that's just up and coming. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn by, Mr. Hurd, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Diggins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you so much for everyone coming early and doing all that other stuff.